You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 31st, 2024 special meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Council members, me, Ron, is your question?
Your.
Your. Are there any council members?
That be more?
Uh, no.
Okay, so JD Haley and Shannon Walden are absent. Chief Swinton?
Present.
Tony Willoughby?
Right.
And a parent in Trista Hudson? I'm here, I'm here. So, Craig and my house, I'm here, that's his role.
Thank you. Uh, so generally, we have public comments at the beginning, but we're gonna have a little. So, we're here for the contract change order for stop seven being drainage improvement. Uh, Chief, you want to listen summary?
Yes, good, good morning, everyone. Two weeks ago, we near completion on the stop seventeen being stormwater project along Lake Shore Drive. Several additional catch basins have been added to Lake Shore Drive to capture the stormwater fallout from any rainfall. Um, actually, here in the last several weeks, we've had some significant rainfall for the last two weeks. Um, our team consisting of the public works team here in the town of Long Beach, um, my office, house and associates, their engineering teams, park board officials, town council members. Uh, we've been kind of monitoring the overall rainfall that we've been receiving and how the whole system is captured in rainfall. We're very pleased with Lake Shore Drive and how the stormwater is being captured. And the outfall that has always been at stop eighteen, um, the outfall previously, um, some years ago, there was a change made to the boardwalk. Um, at the end, there was another boardwalk, there's a marble valley that actually walked through the stormwater. Well, now we're seeing that again, some significant erosion that is occurring there because of the amount of water coming out of the outfall. Um, it's no different than before, and they seem like, oh, there is more now, but there's some changes that need to be done, some modifications of the outfall. A lot of those modifications that are at the recommended recommendation of our engineering team and Woodruff and Sons. Um, so we've now brought the council together today, um, to give this, um, presentation, to have this discussion, and to present some change orders of some additional work that we'd like to add to the contract that was awarded to Woodruff and Sons last year. Um, there are four change orders before the town council today. And with that, I would like to introduce, um, the engineer in charge of this project along with, uh, both Brad and Sam are here today, both engineers from our associates. But Brad Minnick is going to open up the discussion and give a description of the four change orders for the council today. And then we'll allow some discussion and questions from both the park board representatives, the council, and then some, uh, public questions as well.
All right. Everyone here? Good.
Thank you, Chief, uh, Brad Minnick and our associates. Uh, most of us should have a copy of the change orders, I've opened them together, um, for simplicity. Uh, I'll go through them thoroughly briefly and then, uh, just got to get your impressions. So, the first change order, number one, uh, was substitution of, uh, some people, uh, had an accelerator, um, that we specified in the plans, uh, the contractor offered, and acceptable alternative. So that was a $10,000 deed out savings to the project. Upon review, be found and to be accountable and acceptable constitution, so that's change order one. For our second step, which I can do, just for the benefit of the audience, just describe what that separator, um, does to the water or sand when you sand it. I just think it's important that we share with the, uh, community the importance of putting in this separator and future separators, how working towards cleaning the water, fire discharge into the out of the beach.
So, outside of rainwater, um, you have the leaves, you have the sand moving into the surface. So, what is the density of judgment? Separator takes out sediments and tracts of sediments. The only thing that is permitted, uh, separator is the water. So, it's mixing the water before it is charged into the drain. Um, also, um, takes out, uh, hydrocarbons, if you have a spillage. So, it separates, uh, the, uh, the hydrocarbons and all everything that is not certain. Everything because of the density of water and the density of, say, water. So, it separates it and the only thing that's permitted to go beyond the, uh, beyond the separator is the water. And, um, it's required maintenance maybe, um, after three months or six months, the already disposed fluids flow straight to the pavement that we don't want. It's going to be maintained regularly and it's going to be bad when it extracts enough sediments that, uh, that, uh, destroy the flow. So, it's, it's, um, I, I think it's a very good innovation and it will help, um, know that anything that goes to the drain is safe and there's no going to be any environmental impact.
Thank you, Sam. And also, the council benefit, one of the things in working with the MS Board Plan, um, that Larry Wall is our MS Board Coordinator, in fact, will be hosting a meeting next Tuesday here for the North West Indiana MS Board Coordinators, is that we have talked about Long Beach is trying to be, you know, cutting edge as far as these soil separators is our first one. We want to look at additional soil separators in the future, um, that we would pay for out of our stormwater funds that we generate monthly here in the town. Uh, so this is a trial basis to get this first soil separator in. Woodruff and Sons came forward with a very good idea, uh, where they found an alternative to the original structure, which is much lighter, which did not require a crane to place that structure, therefore saving us, uh, as you see in the discount that Brad was describing to us. So, but Sam, thank you, Brad Minnick, for your explanation.
Thank you, Sam. And so, that's change order one, um, you know, in a nutshell, uh, change order two. Uh, it was the additional, additional drainage in line between sixteen thirty-six and seventeen hundred. Thanks for your right, um. We have the structure here, add the structure and the only potting water between those two entrances on the north side of the road. Um, as Chief has mentioned, this, uh, project, obviously, was to take standing water off Lake Shore Drive, um, and get it into structures. And this one was a, a small structure, um, to capture the pocket water that was between those two residences on the north side of the road. Um, basically, that became apparent as, as we went through, this winter went through with iron, that we needed, uh, an additional structure there to do that. Um, it wasn't anywhere near the size of some of the other structures, but, uh, it was still necessary. So, that's change order two, and that was a $3,800 add to the contract. Change order three, um, which, uh, one of the biggest, um, is the largest, and it's a, not to receive price of $5,000 to, um, do a combination of things. Uh, as Chief said years ago, there was impact from, uh, outfall waters that fade its way along what is now the boardwalk path. Um, and our design tied into that outfall, but with significant rain events, um, the month, um, has become apparent that realigning the boardwalk and shifting it to the east and fortifying the, the ditch or the, or the outfall, the, our primary tie into, in effect, um, fortifying that additional geofabric, geographic fabric and river raft, and then realigning the boardwalk to the east and enhancing it, um, to align this one, park board initiatives, have an observation area, um, at the top of the stairs, uh, that what, that's what the change order is, and if you turn the next couple pages, uh, all this, this, the page of the plan sheet, number C781, you said that one. Uh, that gives a view of, if you look left, annoying, you can see the outline of the existing boardwalk as it traverses down this sand area, um, immediately to the right of the water. And the whole shift would be to take the deck in an old easterly fashion, um, and then build out the observation area at the top, still, still a comfortable elevation on top of the dune. And, and dark reverse elevator, if you will, on the drawing, um, would be a seating area. And then there would be steps down, uh, towards the dune, that, that closely mirror the steps throughout as a day. Um, so that, that, and then will be the rest of the change order, just connecting the aisles and again, armory of the existing ditch where our project tightens to further fortify it. Um, created all the work under there, you can imagine, based on any needs under the existing boardwalk. Um, that, uh, a challenge, our environment to shade or barely to handle the outfall water. And so, I'll, any questions?
I don't want to hold Brad, um, no. I don't know, I don't see the distance between the dam and the property line. We have five foot setback, Lake Shore Drive's at least five feet.
Okay, um, the, same one. You, um, see the thirty foot reference there, there?
Yeah.
The east, um, and the property line is beyond that, so the reference, further east? I, I don't know, is, um, what that offset is, um, the property?
Brad, we, um, we met as park board officials and with a couple of council members in the last several days, and that is one of the concerns of the project, is to make sure that we are within the five foot setback of the town's property line there. And then another is, I'm sure we'll have some discussion here, is from the platform, traversing from the observation platform into the dune there. Um, there's been some discussion that possibly with this first year, that we not move forward with any type of stairs or stairway system there, that we place, uh, some metal rating into the dune itself. I know we have talked about that potentially with Woodruff, that's a possibility. Um, so I think that part of our discussion here this morning as well, is how we want to get it from the observation deck down into the mountain to the beach. Um, as we all know, the lake groundwater changes every single year. Um, we may want to just go this season through the winter and see what it does to that area north of that platform as you go down onto the beach, and maybe, you know, Zach, you might want to add to that conversation, and you were present this week as well, so. So, I guess we'll open that up as, uh, so that the engineer can consider that and finalize this point. Yeah, sorry, I said, I heard me, I don't know, park board. Um, so, the only concerns I don't find with, with the new, the, the platform that goes, that's not able to, like, the sort of rating on that platform will set the people up this morning.
Oh, there's a bit, it's looking, no, it's five percent, yes.
But no step now, right, Sam? Just a five percent grade, no, no step downs. Okay, then when you get down on the platform, just lead by eight, and then the, the part that's tricky, when you're down there at the site, the, there would be on top of the dune, basically, where that platform is. And so, I don't want to do is go steps into the dune. I don't want to disturb the dune, I think it could disturb the dune because we're, we're walking public access to the beach, but I would, we just open up the exit of the platform. And then I'll go traffic to naturally leave the dune down and, and dig a pathway to the beach, because there isn't much drop from the bottom down to speech level today, but to your point, that can change. And in doing that, that's going to tough on people to get, you know, be carrying things and traverse and then right down to do naturally, local traffic. So, it's like too buried, no, rarely, it just gets buried in the sand to fifteen feet, doesn't have, it's not bigger or anything. So, people have something to grab up to inside. And it'll also keep people away from this area here, it's pretty sheer. So, and I'm going to sort of wrap and ensure that, that we don't let people accidentally walk in that way. So, if you're able to keep people from doing that, and just sort of guide people, or I mean, what that has to be, because I don't want it to be off to the east and then certainly getting into property to the east for that. I don't want people to walk straight away from the platform. And I think later on, we'll get next year, do we put downstairs kind of the natural lowered ones? The trip to that is, if you go left or you go right, as the ordinance states, we're going to be going into that, that canyon, this redeveloped water, we'll be going into the property of the house piece. So, we may have to figure out whether to make an exception, going straight down, because we're allowed public access, using those stairs, you know, into the beach, we're not, I think that is, because we're allowed public access, if I did today. I think that was believable, um, but it's not natural, we have asked homeowners to do it on. So, those are, it's considered fair, I'll open the doors, it's going to be right there, so five percent, five. Let's see what that's going to look like, you know, the people do not initially degrade without the, the eighteen. Uh, but if the phone's not going to be any deeper than into the grades of the boardwalks at eighteen is a day.
I don't think so. I think that is, and this is, is what they've recovered for, eighty, eight, four, and.
Okay, okay. So, we'll be right on the whole sides of that new, yes, trap, like, and, and, okay. So, yeah, first, we're, we're comfortable with that. I just think we're going to have to see how the platform sits in the sand once it's in. And because we have, we don't have to see, I think we'll be able to, to work with Woodruff and mix and alter it as we go, which is what we also could do. Be able to sort of topography, that we deal with, it's just, so, any questions to me?
Well, thanks, Sam, thanks for hearing, but we all went out there, won fifty. So, um, you know, it doesn't seem that steep when you walk through all those amusement stuff, like, I really would feel it will be helpful, especially as a guide, um, to go like that.
This is very similar to what happened at twenty eight with, with, you know, the sheer cliff, it's falling with the high one. People wanted stairs, we didn't put stairs, and then eventually, uh, over the course of a few months, we got a really nice path from two A to get down to H. That's, that's what happened here, but much quicker, because there's no cliff to, and so.
One other, uh, thing, and in cooperation with, uh, we want to be very conscious of species, right? Um, and, and, uh, we did this ghost, and I, if they're not here, it's a danger, um, for the, how we use that. Uh, hopefully, the beach hall, like, on Monday, Friday, you should, they'll have access to build this up and then all of the weekend. Um, obviously, one of the dangers sometimes have other plans, but, uh, like one will be respect the whole of the boardwalk holiday, and then also the, of the increase in, uh, that happen the total weekend, so. And I think that's, that's a real good idea. Uh, we spent a lot of time talking about preserving the dune, it had such a long reestablishment period. The dune grass, we planted a toilet stop, uh, at eighteen, they have several year establishment period. So, uh, we want to protect, we'll scout there and preserve it. Uh, our root system looks quite even, if we want, we want to maintain that. It's, um, a trend really, so.
Brad, in addition to the change in the layout of the boardwalk and with the addition of the observation platform and that, we talked a little bit about the restoration work, uh, with the additional rip raft, leaving the outfall at its current location, and then how, uh, between the engineering team and the contractor, was the plan to kind of dam up some of the rip raft down below, slow down the velocity, to channel that water moving it into the area underneath where the current stairs are, and by us vacating and moving those stairs out of there, allowing the proper outfall areas to occur on the beach.
Right, so, um, again, tying into the existing outfall that was built as part of the boardwalk construction, I believe, uh, years ago, that rip raft is going to be, uh, salvaged and reused, but we need to blind it with fabric underneath it because basically it's sitting on sand and it's a water running through, um, the sand with it and the rip raft falls. Um, the tier textile fabric will be, in effect, a, a create hole to prevent that sand from walking through water. And, um, that once, uh, once that section of boardwalk is, um, that'll, that'll allow concrete access in that area to fortify it, and the intention is to push larger stones directly to the valley of the ditch to kind of check, check out when it's full of lots of water. So, we hope to have, um, some of the water committed, when at the end of the rip raft where it hits just sand, where the water be in a, a calmer, um, state. Um, and, let it be, fancy bird is lame or, oh, but we just don't want, we don't want quite a lot of practice condition, um, when it gets out of the rip raft into the beach. So, um, that's, that's a component in addition to the observation deck that is also fortified, that outfall. So, we have more of an inch on it than, than a sheer vertical base. So, and then, uh,
and then also, we'll be building on all the pillars and supporting the, the current boardwalk, the additional changes in that. Um, so, making sure that, you know, it's safe for residents to, you know, traverse, well, make sure to drive onto the beach. Uh, there's some work there that needs to be done as well, and Woodruff will take care of assuring that, uh, no, no future washouts occur near those tight paths, if we, if they're supportive.
And then, any questions about first, or feedback or suggestions about the, the boardwalk area?
Thank you all.
Okay, so that is, um, change order three, and then the very last, shooting forward to the single last page, um, and then is due, uh, twelve, approximately fifty nine foot of circular DC pipe and restore the finished surface to existing conditions tied in existing proposed super developers. Uh, and then I just go into how that will be accomplished. They basically have a four hole to charter number two with that toilet provided. And, um, and then this section of pipe that ties together, uh, two catch bases that are to the west with the newly installed catch base, uh, structure number two at, at the east. And then put it back on, uh, the driveway there that we're going through, um, is concrete. And that will be replaced with traditional concrete, um, with a very, very cold, and then, of course, the, the grad will be reestablished with new grass, um, to, to tie in what, what we're going to, into this. So, the entire whole of the project is to get the water off the road, off the shoulder and get it, uh, through the separator, which included it, and then get it safely down to the beach. Well, that, that's a more cheap order, and that would be a cost, that would exceed $10,000. Um, so, that's the summary of the boardwalk universe. What will allow them to finish on their project. Um, and, and I, I had opportunity to talk to John a little bit, John a little bit earlier this week about, uh, a short day moment, all, all we've ever is for the managing the water along all the tops. Uh, and I'm glad here that you guys have posted them as well, because you really are, uh, leading it over in other duties along the lake shore, uh, to the west, and, uh, Long Beach should be right. I wish others, I hope others, uh, follow suit there, because you're really committed to preserve this shoreline. And, uh, unfortunately, a sheer difference, I would apologize for that. Now, I'm.
Man, of course, I mean, we could, we're open enough to the public comment, maybe talk a little bit about the overall cost change associated with the change orders that are before you, um, how we anticipated funding, uh, these change orders that are before you today as well. Um, just for the, uh, effective of the public belows in attendance on Zoom. The project that we discussed today, and these changes discussed today, would come out with the town's stormwater fund. And that is revenue that comes in monthly, that all the residents paid into the stormwater fund here in the town of Long Beach. That particular fund can only be used for stormwater related items. We cannot use it to put new park benches in the park, buy new streets we've heard, it only can be used for these types of projects. Um, we have many more stormwater projects in the community that we do need to address. Um, one that we talk about is here on St. Lawrence, behind us, we have a deteriorating roadway that will be addressed next year in our CC energy, our paving project, where some stormwater infrastructure needs to be put into the roadway to get the water off the road, because when the water sits there, it's deteriorating the asphalt. Um, and we want to prevent that, and so our roadways do last longer. So, there's additional stormwater work we have to do in this project. We've made great strides in making some significant changes in seventeen and eighteen, I like sure we're right. And next, we need to move farther to the east, down at twenty eight, twenty nine, we have some stormwater issues down there, um, where a bell plane comes down and meets at Lake Shore Drive, and a lot of skating bar there, that we need to address in the future. Ben Collins and Trista Hudson, associates, have worked the last several days, um, looking at our projected revenue income coming into the fund, um, the cost associated to this project, and then, so I guess I'd like to maybe turn it over to the, the two ladies, maybe talk a little bit about, you know, funding and, uh, projections, and then maybe after that, we can open up some additional questions about all four change orders that are discussed there. And I guess, okay, we'll like that, is we're not asking for any invoices to be paid today or anything like that, just the jug approval of change orders, approving these stormwater strive today to move forward, allowing the contractor to begin this work as soon as next week, um, completing this work within seven to ten days, and then. Um completing this work within seven to ten days and then future invoicing uh would be made to the town.
Yeah, so Tristan and I got together um and. Ended up in a good place with. The funds being available in our stormwater fund. With the timing of the payments that would be made. With the first file, I believe we received an invoice that would be accrued at the June, that would be then paid in June. And looking at our projections. Making another, I believe, maybe the final payment in the fall to address. Uh. We would still have a balance at the end of the year in the stormwater fund, looking ahead to our capital plan for. Next year, bottom of the year, as we get receipts into the stormwater fund, I believe, that build up this balance and. That balance would still provide everything in our capital plan for the past couple of years, so. It was good news that we didn't need to look elsewhere for any funds for this project.
And you also, I need to add key details as you look at the spreadsheets that you're seeing on small line mutations here. Um nobody was just referring to the June, we see just above in the dispersment section, just below that nine line, three fifty. Three hundred and fifty thousand, that's the first bill this year's reference. I want to point out that in normal, when you see the fund projections probably not this year at a time. But for this particular situation, it's important to show you how the cash is flowing each month this year. So the green are the numbers that are verified in the financial system that I've already got. You see they include travel receipts at the top, uh each month we receive just five million dollars in revenue on stormwater. And then that part of the section follows the dispersments, so the numbers. Um well, those green donations again are the expenses that I've actually gathered this year. As you can see, the blue months, those are projections, those are expectations. So we did continue uh portion of that revenue expectation. As well than my average, the four hundred dollars in local personal services. So I wanted to point out that we're accounting for some of the other revenues from this stormwater that needs to pay in addition to these capital things. The reference I was looking by a hundred dollars for other services and charges line. Is in relation to uh construction services for our school coordinator. And some other contract work as you're coming down to a situation to finally approve, maybe finally will that on hand is a bit of a. The final approval of uh your end of course stormwater protected organs in that. I'm looking at China. So round of points here then, again, the three hundred and fifty thousand you see listed. The number ending fails right over the dark background lines at the bottom, that is the gap in the font. So at the end of June, it is, you know, come as we expect, then you still have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh in cash. As we move across that capital line, then that reference to that tour. You see right now that you have one hundred and fifty five thousand two hundred ninety five. That's the expected final bill and this in the meeting today, though, that entry was based on the number I had yesterday. Of four hundred ninety five thousand two hundred ninety five, so we will base on the final number. Except for today, we won't add five thousand dollars back, you can see that that getting five thousand dollars back. We still have a report. So again, if everything works out as expected through uh October. Your ending cash flow may be just around twenty five thousand dollars. Most importantly, I want to point out for you in December. The number of five hundred thirty seven thousand two oh three. That's implied. Simply to total. All of the expenses from that line here today, that's not an actual expense, maybe I should have boxed it or made it yellow, I'm sorry, I didn't think to maybe highlight that. I needed to be able to show you that come December. If you pay all these things as you're discussing, you would be spending five hundred thirty seven thousand dollars in capital out there. Simply as a reminder that right now, the budget listed and approved is at a real fifty. Four hundred and fifty thousand, so we'll need one more additional recreation to get us to that five hundred thirty seven thousand dollar total. Not a problem, the cash is here for that. I just needed that number uh in front of you so that you have that understanding of the rest of the financial review process. What that means is on the ending balance line, the negative four hundred seventy thousand, that's not. I should have made it say in that column for your justice matter, I apologize. You will not be in the whole river city five thousand, that's simply. I will let that be the sheet. Uh I will do that with these meetings, but there's no confusion going forward.
Trista, also for discussion will be some um. Construction management, construction oversight and engineering costs related to the project, not exceed twenty five thousand dollars as well, I shared with Meg yesterday. Um that will be figured into this equation as well, Brad can share that we've got the initial funding he's figured for completion of the project thus far. And we anticipate there's going to be additional savings at some point, once we get to your final numbers back in on everything as well, and we'll see as an additional credit. Uh which is not ready to say what that credit is yet because of the final invoice, correct, right?
That's correct, um so we received our first. Uh payback or invoice from water yesterday morning uh. And it was a little over half my value. Uh but the work that remains to be done is is what is for you today, the the change orders, so um. Even though they not built for it, work has been completed and has been part of our effort and lots of associates is to not have it along the way. Right, so you know, I just finally at the end. Oh, we get an extra um fifty thousand of this, now we're. We're monitoring it, but their invoice is not caught up with with what we did, so that's. That's all right, um it just, it takes a. It takes time for. Uh they're coming to catch up with our NFX. Uh real time documentation, they've got a hundred foot pipe, uh two, we document, they put a hundred foot. They may not give the bill to us for a month or some matter, but. That that will add, so.
Well, and that's part of what I want to clarify in my um. Megan, I'm looking at some of the hospitals that she's had. Twenty thousand dollars for examples of groups, I think the March meeting maybe. So. Of this basically five hundred thousand out that we're having there. Does that include all of that loss, engineering builds or the twenty five that the bunch of this still going to be actual, and we then consider that too? That's why I'm not having it there myself.
Right, we'll need to consider that also with this project in addition to being changelors.
Okay, so that twenty five thousand needs to be added that here on the projection you just discussed.
Correct.
I.
We're hoping that impact may only be, let's say fifteen thousand and ten thousand more minutes back to the project at final invoice, yeah, but we need a plan. For the worst case scenario, it will be the twenty five thousand.
Okay, so it's really important going forward. Everything I was worried about this project was four hundred and fifty thousand and of course we have things on, right, it it's not. A negative difference of any debt or his banner anything at all. It's just simply a reminder that as we talk about the new projects, to make sure that. When we have that final number that we keep discussing, that includes all of this, so I think you know, like. The four fifty really should have been or the better four eighty. I know a lot of people talk about hiring, but then all these, there are some savings going in, some of them reduced, but um.
Yeah, I understand the projections should have been set higher, just like, I guess we could touch on the water surface, um the water tap and I'll make sure to drop that. That came in much lower, both, I believe, the engineering side and. Correct, right, yeah, so on that one, we came in over this one we had forward till today. And then in the last month, working on these change orders, now unfortunately we're lost above this.
Yeah, well, and I think you know that. The um construction within here is, yeah, there's still very expensive and and from there, I think. Yeah, they need this, obviously, we need to make sure that when we're here on this side of the ball, that we talk about the entire deal all with the max together at the very beginning. So that um. There's no unintended surprises because we got all of those pieces together all.
No, and I would agree, like in this project, now it's over a ten percent above the order contract was. Uh all unfortunate unforeseen things occurred to that and we're addressing them. Um but again, yeah, I think to everybody's credit, everybody has looked together quite well the last forty days, it's been exceptional communication and input. Um from everybody keeping the council abreast of what was going on, the engineering team, the contractors, the towns team. Um but yeah, I would agree in the future, maybe we need to set our expectations on the finance side a little bit higher as we start the projects and thank God. We're getting ready to close out three major projects for the town, public safety building, water service plan, um improvement plan and stormwater plan, all three of those will hopefully be closed out in the next thirty to forty five days.
Any other comments? No. Uh we have any other comments? So if you're going to speak into the microphone, could you just give your name and address?
Sure.
And then anybody on Zoom will get to you and could you please do the same?
Uh Tim Hort, uh seventeen oh three, we sure tell them. Step eighteen is might apparently be a stop used in also our winter and everything. Oh, I even want to thank the council for jumping on this so quickly when you wrote the best, it was a problem, okay? Uh just to take you all to respect, the timeline was bad, at least for me, to two thousand and ten. Uh there was no canyon at that time, there was a complete sidewalk that went part of the way. And then there was no lobby, a steep uh two to climb down to the beach, then they climb up to the beach, okay? Uh the canyon developed when we did uh many stop improvements at the time, eighteen was somewhere along the way, other stop improvements. Uh there was a driveway, a home order here was taken out, was part of that, uh dune grass was put in, the boardwalk um. Was put in, uh the canyon developed after that, that's when the canyon started, it's recent history. It's before you were here, but it's relative and recent history. Boardwalk came in, it's kind of a solution to that canyon that was developed. And then the boardwalk intersected with the canyon. Uh there were roots and things, people had to climb over, I was like, there were sawzall chopping roots and things like that. Um but that happened in the after the additional stop improvement project in eighteen. Um the stormwater well project that came that came in after that. Uh you know, we had a lot of problems that make sure trouble with water in that area between. Uh midway between sixteen and uh and eighteen, ninety nine, right, it did a great job of that. But the interruption of water now is created as we've seen the last two uh rains uh of the canyon we've appeared. And it just seemed like in from an engineering perspective, they have only access to the beach and the outflow of the stormwater intercept was originally of course desired. If this, these change orders gratefully are are going to do a lot to alleviate and hopefully. With the platform, there's always a platform there, it was a. Do we would stand out and look at the city view or whatever, sunsets. Uh there would always a platform there, now there's going to be a physical uh made managed platform, which is great again. Uh I'm hoping these other change orders will alleviate some of the problem with the uh with the with the interruption of the outflow, you know, it's a time thing. I would I would rather have the water stay in the street a little bit longer and come out slower so that we didn't uh keep this canyon going. Somebody mentioned, let's wait a year, let's see what happens, you know, we we know it happens year after year after year, let's not wait a year. Uh I don't know how many more summers I have to look at sunsets, so I I would encourage you to just let's give this a thought, you know. As opposed to let's see, as far as the direction, I I I agree with uh this being over there. They come straight out, it might be a better way than go over towards the north side. Uh because you're a couple of weeks close to the other, oh, there's some property over there. Um. That that's pretty much it, I I appreciate you guys doing something about this. Uh but the 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 timeline, like I said, there was never a canyon there before we started doing uh improvements to stop eighteen. Um and then that's pretty much uh, that's pretty much all I have to say, try to try not to wait here to to do this, let's get it, let's get it tied, thanks.
Thank you.
May just to address those comments, um the intention is to build a platform. Uh in the next, hopefully, two weeks, uh the world was probably holiday. Um and and a and a handrail down, but for next year it will be uh the addition of theirs. So so the platform will be built this summer with the, does that clear it up or maybe does it appear?
Yeah, how long will we get down to the beach, you know, with the handrail in through sand then or?
Yes, yeah, so the sand is fairly level, the platform is going to be, you would be walking right into well soon. I mean, and then walking down, yeah, like we use, basically, yes, and if what I'm saying about the year, that. If that becomes seed, that becomes drought, becomes an issue, then we'll put metal stairs. To fix that issue, I'm hoping that would be a problem, we're not going to have the bone off there now. That that's the whole, so it it doesn't start to do with stairs, yeah.
Okay, but is it going to be a, well, see, you know, not at all, no.
Well, I was down and looked at it again yesterday, I have a little bits of it there.
And I was the one that had objections to the. The steepness of the boardwalk, if you recall.
You don't get that, yeah.
You kind of fooled me at the time saying, well, eighty is not an issue. And it was like twice as much as any angle in the cloud, and I understand it's that. He was bad or whatever. Uh that I am getting with the spider set than the and the engineering shit. Um so yeah, well, thanks for telling me it's going to be not a seat, seeing.
I'd have to be all the way down and talk to it. Yeah, all right, okay.
Any other comments?
Yeah, good morning, sorry, come back with the mission. Just thank you for all you've done, I appreciate this here at all, eight oh six, regional direct. Uh appreciate all you've done, you've been able to get a lot of this project done for the happy season, so. I've got a pleasure for that and thanks for your attention to come out and try and look at the situation resolved. Uh just kind of, just lots of levels and flow of the lake and the whole uh sand and everything, just looking at one day to allow. Yeah, retaining the whole, not buried in the sand, so there've been a lot of things that have happened. For a while, this company gone, I think as well, so. Uh just what I think I learned. About, I think that's so important, communication, I've seen the board and how we really try and run a lot of the communication overall in the town, so. Want to say thanks to that, I like the sound of the metals and the stops going down and that's, we've seen that at other stops and I think that's a great, great thing, so. Thank you, just a question is to maybe start building like a ten percent uh contingency, Brian, we're seeing if it could really help. Start off some of your budgeting goals, uh and on your project. You guys make.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Just the thoughts.
Well, I'm at voice, stop twenty nine, and I kind of put a present there in the background. So I was, I wanted to ask a question, began to hear this here. Because it seemed like the area affected by rainfall appeared to be reasonable for the solid, solid. South seventeen to the west, south nineteen to the east, because it's a whole water. And it's all been jammed and stopped eating. If anybody can help with it, one is a very small, does not have any other gallon to stop eating against the excess. Now you have an eighteen inch discharge pipe, which is a bit, they are deleted, I can consider baseball gallons now. So we were going back to the public beach and become part of the public trust, will be a tremendous milestone. And then the channel to the beach and probably destroy it and left something over the dump. So I think before you go too much farther, you have to find out how much water is being accepted and it's not eighteen. And that's a simple calculation, you take the square footage of the area and you calculate from there. And you don't try to cheat. And you may find that there's a big disaster. And what you spend too much more money trying to control this thing and build washouts and everything else, then you may be an adventure going through. So if you're talking a little bit, thank you.
Any other other comments? Do we have any other comments on June? Okay, seen, um, do we have more? Uh, I would be tempted to approve the four change orders that were just been presented. Do we have a second for discussion? Second, any discussion?
The show which there and that's what we should do.
Oh, yes, we'll also include the additional landing area of twenty five thousand dollars worth of the area. Second, okay, any discussion? Oh, there again, I, 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 any votes? Okay, no questions. Uh, having no other business, I want to hang on to the burn. Don't you do the burn? Second, second, I'll be this guy.
I don't.
Okay, thank you everyone.
See you.